All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for USD 290. It is April 12th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We will do a rule call. Linda Alderman.
Present.
Chris Cunningham.
Present.
Julie Dandrio, present. Susan Moore.
Present.
She's joining us via Zoom. Shanda Olmstead is absent tonight. Melidia Payne.
Present.
Harold Wingert.
Present.
We have six board members present, so we'll call this meeting to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Susan, give me a yes or a no.
Yes.
All right, that passes six oh. And we have the consent agenda, which does not have anything unusual on it. You've all had this and reviewed it over the last week. Is there someone that would like to make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Susan, yes or no?
Yes.
So that passes six oh as well. We do not have any comments from the public this evening. So we are down to our first report and presentation. And we are pleased to welcome Rod and Season Bass, who is going to discuss the addition of a trap shooting program with USD 290. And this item is just for discussion tonight. We don't have to be taking any action.
Yeah. So I want to thank Rod and Season for coming in. We met two weeks ago or so. Had some conversations about what this might look like. I did want to let the viewers that are at home know that they're going to go through the present. They will hear everything that Rod and Season are going to talk about in their presentation tonight. But there is a video that in order to make the sound not have feedback in here, they will not hear the sound at home. But you can see the video online and you can actually click on it at home through this website and watch it on your own if you need to. But just wanted to make sure that people knew at home that they wouldn't hear the sound on the video, but they'll get everything else. So with that, we're going to let Rod and Season come on up and present about trap shooting in OHS and OMS level.
Here.
Somebody's calling to say you're online.
Probably like, I see you.
Okay, so we're really excited to bring this trap team. There's plenty of positive impact, you know, on the students. I think what we want to do, though, first is watch this video about the league and kind of how it works. Can we get this up there on the screen?
In most sports, young athletes spend years honing skills that they'll never use when they're older. But one sport provides a gateway to a lifetime of enjoyment and expertise, shooting sports. And since 2001, the USA High School Clay Target League and its state affiliates have been bringing the excitement of Olympic shooting sports to young people in area schools. The league is open to boys and girls in grades six through 12 who've earned their firearm safety certification. Practices and competitions are held weekly at a local gun club under the supervision of trained coaches and volunteers. At each event, every athlete participates equally, taking the same number of shots regardless of skill level. Scores are submitted by coaches through the league's team management system, compared against conference opponents, and posted on the league's website. The season concludes with a state tournament where every team is invited to compete for awards and recognition. Students love the league because of the competition and camaraderie. Parents love it because it's affordable and so safe. In fact, since the league began, there hasn't been a single injury to athletes or spectators. Making clay target shooting the safest high school sport in the country, and with the nationwide membership in the thousands, it's also the fastest growing. So get on board. We're targeting you to join us at USAClayTarget.com.
So a couple of things we want to point out with that video is that, for one, it being the safest sport out there. And that is even in comparison to chess, which is number two. So not really sure how you get hurt with chess, but it's possible. So it's amazing that in 19 years, that I believe the numbers were over 60 million shots have been fired and nobody's been injured in any way, shape, or form. It's all about, our goal is to make sure the kids learn gun safety and that that's always the primary responsibility in the entire aspect of it. There's no bench warmers. Everybody can be involved. It's a very, it's a gender neutral sport. It doesn't matter if someone has a handicap of some kind or what it is, they're able to compete in the sport. And it doesn't matter their athletic ability. And there's another one on the safest sport aspect that just gives some information about it being 19 years, over 80,000 participants, and over 60 million shots with zero injuries. And we intend to keep that number growing, so. And then benefits to the school is it'll all be, it's all student funded, so there's, it doesn't cost the school anything to do it. The kids are out there, you know, supporting the school, and it's another sport that everybody can get involved in. Everyone's insured, and that's coaches, parents, or, you know, everybody that's involved in it. The volunteer coaches that help out with it, the kids, everybody's insured. They pay for that separately through the Kansas Clay Target Association. Takes care of that, kind of like kids wrestling. And it's just $35. It's rather inexpensive, but we do intend to have fundraisers to help the kids who can't necessarily afford it. So not just doing fundraisers that the kids are in charge of, but also we're doing some community outreach to see how much of the community will help us get this off the ground and make it as doable as possible for everybody. And we did pass out a paper that just gave some more statistics. Thirty-nine percent of all league athletes are involved in no other extracurricular activity. So it's bringing in a very large other number of kids to get involved in something other than school, which we know brings up test scores and GPA. They're more likely to attend college, less likely to drop out of high school. Higher college admissions, test scores, and it helps just team camaraderie for those who haven't ever really been involved in that. It helps with increased self-esteem, all of those kinds of things. There's also the aspect of those who continue to stay in the sport afterwards is like a 99% re-enrollment rate, which is amazing that those kids don't fall out of the sport. Most of them that join it love it and stay with it, so.
I think that's about all. I have any questions?
Where would they shoot here? Where's the shooting range?
That's a great question.
Right out here in the backyard.
It's in my backyard, Harold. That's not fun.
So it's Harold's backyard. Cedar Hill Gun Club is where it would be held.
Which is located between Baldwin and Lawrence.
Lawrence.
Okay. And we've already worked with the gun club to figure out, or to get approval to hold our practices there and everything, so. And it's just a one night a week practice and competition. So they compete virtually. They don't have to travel for competitions or anything until it comes to the state event, which is really nice, so they're not, parents aren't all over the place, especially with all the other sports and everything else that's going on in everybody's lives.
And transportation to get kids to practice? Have we figured that out yet?
So transportation is mainly on the parents. Most of them that are involved with a trap team are able to take them and typically involved. However, if other kids, you know, need a ride, there's plenty of parents. I'm certain it's just about like wrestling and stuff like that. We've taken kids everywhere, you know, with us. But we would definitely volunteer as well to take kids. And we want to be able to get the club its own guns that kids can, so they don't have to, there's some kids that can't afford a gun. And I've got a few guns that they can use too, so we'll be more than happy to do that. But we want to eventually be able to get the club to have its own guns to, yeah, just to.
Right. There's a difference between trap gun and shotgun.
Sure.
But any.
Most of those kids out there, though, are using a normal field gun. I mean, a pump, automatic, over and under any one of those field guns and, yeah.
How, do you know about how many kids we have maybe from our district that are already shooting, I think?
I believe there's six.
At Baldwin, but I don't know how many are also at Wellsville.
Okay.
Wellsville.
Are those the two closest schools that have something like this already?
Yeah, Wellsville's actually joined with Udora's team.
Yes.
But yeah, but they still just made it Cedar Hill as well.
But no, so it'd just be Wellsville is the only Franklin County school at this?
Yep.
Now, it talked about gun safety and teaching gun safety. Who teaches that?
So there's a safe program, and then there is a training day, and they have to do that before they can compete. The other thing that's recommended, that's highly recommended, is going through hunter safety as well. If they go through hunter safety, they don't have to do the safe program. The hunter safety course is really the number one. That's, that would be the highly recommended one.
Well, let me get the Jiffy question.
I would, I think, Chris, I was just going to talk, ask if you could give us some information about the students that we already have participating with the other schools on the trap team and what that looks like for. You said there were six others, correct?
There is, and that's, and I only know two of the others, and then including my son, so there's three of them that I know. And they've actually, the last couple of times, shot together, just because they're, they're from Franklin County. But they do intermingle there too, and all the kids are great as far as that goes. But those kids, they're, I believe they're first timers as well, and they love it.
Because Baldwin just this year started.
Started accepting outside students.
I know last year we had some students that shot with Udora.
Yes.
But then they weren't accepting any this year.
Right.
So I think this is a great opportunity for our school. I love that it has that actual 39% because I made the same comment when we were talking about moving on to, or accepting bowling. You know, I think it touches a part of our population that is not already involved in something. And we've heard time and time again about how much improvements we see in kids academically and attendance wise and everything when they are involved and engaged in something that is drawing them. You know, sometimes kids just need one thing to have them to be successful in school, that they want to be engaged and involved in. So I think it's a great opportunity and the fact that they're required to learn the safety, the gun safety, because how many kids are going to grow up and get guns and did not have that safety? So as many as USD 290 can get gun safety taught to, I think is, is a great thing for our community, let alone the, the sport is a whole other aspect of it. So I think it's great. And I appreciate you coming and speaking and volunteering to get this started.
Thank you.
Harold, did you have a question?
I think it's a great idea. I didn't even know what trap shooting, how to spell it until this weekend. My fraternity held one, a trap shooting event this weekend. Who knew? I couldn't hit a broadside of a barn and standing inside. My question is, you said about the cost. Is there, I know you said you go do some fundraising, but is there ways to help those that can't afford? I don't know how much it costs or anything. Do you know yet? I mean, is there any ways?
Yeah, we've, we've got a really good idea because, because we've just joined that team and they're, they're doing a raffle ticket. I think they had five items on theirs. And if they sold eight tickets, that pretty much paid for their spring ammo. I don't know that Baldwin's actually doing it that way. I think that's going to pay for ammo next year. They're really trying to build a little bit of money up because they had to get a loan this year because they needed 300 cases of ammo. And that's like $22,000. So with a, as a club, they don't have the funds yet there. So they're trying to build, they're trying to build that so they can be able to do that and, and get, get it to where they can get their ammo cheaper too, so.
But the basic cost breakdown of it is, at least for Baldwin, which I imagine will be very similar to what ours will be, is $115 for the, to join the team. That includes their shooting time at the range. And those students, when, if they go to shoot at other times, they get it at a discounted rate. But it also includes a team shirt and a team mask. And then it's $35 for their insurance that they pay through the league itself, and then they buy their ammo. Of course, right now, that's a little bit on the higher side than what any of us would like it to be. But hopefully, as time goes down, that'll make it even less, or less costly. They do only shoot two rounds each time, so it's 50 rounds. So it's not like they go out and shoot every week 100 or 200 rounds or anything like that. So it does keep it kind of minimized as to how much they spend each week, so.
Yep.
I'd like to echo something Melidia said. I think it has shown itself time and time again that the more opportunities we give kids for extracurricular activities, the more incentive we have them to show up to school and be involved in school. And I think something else Melidia hit on, or maybe you said, if we could figure, if you could figure out how to get hunter ed education as part of your gun safety versus the other one that you mentioned, I think you'll have a huge turnout. I remember Mr. Circle used to do that in the middle school after-school program he ran. They did a hunter education with a virtual deal, so I encourage you to maybe look into that.
Yeah, and we are too. The other Baldwin club does do that too, and they have one coming up. So, and they're helping us a lot as far as stuff like that goes, and, yeah.
Any other questions?
I have one question. When are you thinking that we could get this going here at Ottawa?
So the first step is to get it approved by the board. And then we need to reach out to the Kansas Clay Target and get the team started. Then we'll have to get the 501-3C. I'm not sure, I haven't spoke to them yet, if we can start it in the fall. If we cannot, we'll have to start it next spring. But we're hopeful that we can go ahead and get it, get those kids shooting for Ottawa this fall.
It's a fall sport.
So they have a spring and fall. Yep.
And then state is in June.
June, in Wichita.
Dr. Cobb says, that doesn't affect, does that affect us on any title stuff, female, male? Or would this be straight across the board? I just want to make sure because.
Well, thank you both so much for coming to speak with us tonight. It certainly sounds like there's enough board interest in this that we will likely see that on the agenda at our next meeting. And if we come up with any questions before then, we will ask Dr. Cobb to email you with those so you can further clarify. But thank you very much for bringing that, bringing this to us.
Thank you very much.
I want to thank Rod and Season. They've done a ton of work to try to set something great up for our kids. But I want to address something that Chris said, and I think falls in line with something Melidia said about safety and hunter safety. There is currently legislation being out there, or being, being discussed in Topeka about bringing hunter safety back to schools. That would certainly be something that we would have to consider in terms of that, but certainly the two align. But those two have done an enormous amount of work. And if you remember, about five years ago, we had some people coming in and talking to us about building a trap team at one point in time. I don't think our district was ready for that at this point, but we certainly appreciate their, their work and look forward to seeing what our board can do with this and what our students have access to, hopefully next fall.
All right. Thank you. Before I move on to the next item, Dean, I need some power up here. Oh, well, that's why I, it's plugged in and it's not working. All right. In the meantime, I will go ahead. We, our next item up for discussion is we have the Reach for the Stars. We have Jamie Kider here to, to thank you so much, to give us an update on what they're doing and where they are at with their program. So, welcome.
For those of you that don't know Jamie, she runs our after-school program at Eugene Field through Reach for the Stars. She's going to talk about her grant program a little bit and where we're going in the future.
Thank you. All right. Can you hear me through my mask? I haven't done this. Okay. All right. I've got this. There we go. I thought it was kind of important that I spoke to you guys about how we ended last year. Prior to spring break, I had purchased six weeks of our materials and supplies needed for the last week, six weeks of the program. So obviously, we weren't able to go back. And so once we were able to go back into the building and we had some interested staff come in and put packets together for our families with containing this curriculum, other activities, notes from our teachers, because our teachers were really struggling not being able to say goodbye to their students for the school year. We also put in a registration packet and other fun stuff. So we did schedule a drive-through at Eugene Field, and we also delivered packets to students' houses. Myself and our previous site coordinator also spent some time organizing, creating inventories and supply lists for curriculum for this school year. So that time was well-used as well. Our state conference was canceled as everything else, so the, the speakers and presenters of that state conference, some of them agreed to go ahead and hold Zoom meetings throughout, I think it was two months' worth of program development that we got to do, one or two a week. So it was kind of nice that they did that. We were able to continue to pay our staff through their regular hours, whether they came in and worked or not. So this year, before we could start our program, we had to provide KSDE a navigation plan. And it consisted of information if we, if our district was going to be remote, in-person, or hybrid learning. And we provided, had to provide a structure for every scenario. It had to be approved by Dr. Cobb, and then once it was, I sent it off to KSDE, and then they gave us our approval to start our program. They let us start a couple of weeks later than normal. They actually gave all Kansas after-school programs until October 1st to start their program, but we didn't need that much time to get it going because we were kind of organized, because we, you know, we used that time at the end of the school year. And we will be going two weeks into May to make it for those first two weeks that we started later. So since we could start, or since we were starting with hybrid learning and we could reallocate our 21st century funds, we started Reach for the Stars this year in three sessions, an AM session, a PM session, and a Reach for the Stars session. So we had kids from 7:45 to 5:45 every day of operation through hybrid learning. And our discussions to see how we could safely serve our students, and with the space that we had at Eugene Field, we, we had two rooms. So we had 10 students in each room for both of our AM and PM sessions, and they were, one was K through two and one was three through five. Overall, we served 39 students, and we did have 42 signed up, but during, they were going to start on October 1st and they decided to go remote. So of course, when you do something new, there was always lessons learned. So this is something that was kind of in the back of our heads anyway when we were going into this. But our, our K through two classroom, we're struggling kind of manipulating and navigating through their Google classrooms and, and the assignments and stuff like that. And so are we, because there are many different ways teachers assigned them. So once we figured that all out, we got onto a really good system. Teachers kind of, in the middle of hybrid learning, we're, we're sending in a grid paper with Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then the subject down here. So then they, in each grid for each day, they knew what they were supposed to be doing. And then we could then sign that little square and say, hey, this is what we got done at after-school. So parents didn't have to search and figure out through assignments at home. Another great thing that was very beneficial to us is that we partner with the OLC students, and they started to receive an elective credit for helping us out after they had gotten their homework done during the day. So pretty much they helped in the afternoon session, which was really amazing. It was kind of fun to see them grow into mentors also to our kids. We also added some Reach for the Stars staff through K through two whenever they were available and we needed coverage. Of course, technology issues. A lot of the kids had those QR codes for logins, and they would get lost or they would just not bring them or whatever, and so. And so, um, authentication issues on our Wi-Fi was an issue, and some of the videos and, and links that, um, were on the assignments, we couldn't get to work either. Um, obviously, sometimes we forgot our Chromebooks at home, or they didn't, they couldn't come in. They weren't charged, they didn't have a charging cord. And if any of y'all have been at Eugene Field, you know that the, there's a lack of, um, outlets in the building to, to, um, serve everybody's computer at one time. Um, but I do want to say that I'm very proud of my staff. They kind of, um, rocked it out that first week. They got into a great routine, and each week, we just kind of, um, improved a little bit too. And, um, our kids were very resilient during this time as well. There was a lot of moving parts during the hybrid learning, and we're very proud of them. And for me, I was, um, a part of the morning session in the K through two room, and, um, I'm usually the one that gets to do all the admin stuff. So for me, being with the kids again, it was kind of a, um, it really hit with me that, um, this is what, why we're doing what we're doing. And, um, so it was very rewarding for me. All in all, I think that it was a success and that, um, uh, the good definitely outweighed on any of the struggles. So, as far as our Reach for the Stars session, we started it also September nineteenth, or September fourteenth. And, um, and to try to serve our students safely, it was decided that we would only serve twenty kids from each school, um, with the COVID protocols and the space that we had given to us. So, um, all of our, um, elementaries, we kept separate as well, just until recently. So, um, we started at, each school had two classrooms, K through two and a three through five. And since we've been doing really good with our COVID protocol and, um, every, the cases are going down, we just recently, um, combined some of our schools so that our classrooms are a little bit more even as far as a, a teacher-student ratio. Um, I did do a typo on there. Garfield should say sixteen, so I don't know who does math, but that's just typo. So, um, we did lose forty-seven of our enrolled, pre-enrolled students from spring, um, for multiple reasons, and, um, many of them were, um, students were going remote, or families moved from the district, or parents, or a lot of it was parents are working from home now, and they no longer needed after-school care. And some just didn't want their kids in a mask a couple more days. So, um, we continue to provide our hands-on curriculum. Some of our kids' favorites are our Passport Unit, where they learn about different countries. And we have tons of STEM activities that we do. And this year, we have, um, dug even deeper into an art appreciation, and they just finished, um, painting ceramics from a place called, um, Ceramic Cafe out of Overland Park. They put together kits, you can go pick it up. If it weren't for COVID, they would come and teach the kids and kind of be there to guide them to paint, but they put it together, a YouTube video, and we showed it to the kids and the staff, and they just went after it, and they had a lot of fun. Um, we do have a staff who has set up their classrooms similar to Exchange City, if you all know what that is about. Each month, the kids have to apply for a job via job application and go through an applicant, or a interview process. Each month, they pay for rent. They have to pay fines because perhaps their desks aren't clean, so then the police officer gets to find them. So, um, and they also have two paydays per month. So, um, you know, it's great collaboration, and it is, um, great real-world experiences there, so. During the month of November, we made thank-you cards for our food service, bus bar, janitors, and maintenance, because we wanted to make sure that after this year, um, as hard as they work, that we appreciate them for all that they do for us to help make our program, um, how it can, um, they serve us in many areas. So, we just want to make sure that they are appreciated. And when we delivered their garland of cards, they just were really touched and excited. So, sometimes just saying thank you is, it's a lot more, it means a lot more to people than we know. Um, we have a new site coordinator too. Her name is Addie DeJohnit, and she has been with Reach for the Stars, um, as a group leader for four and a half years. And she's doing a really great job adding a, a, a different look and style to our curriculum, and, and she's doing awesome. Um, we're also getting kind of fancy by putting all of our curriculum on, uh, Google Slides and sending that out to our staff so that our staff can use the smart boards in the classroom. And we have a couple of that. Um, our tech, they, they struggle in technologies, so when we have a link or a, a website that goes with our curriculum, we put that link in the, in the, on the sheet, on the slide, and they just click it and they can go. So, it's a lot more cohesive. Um, we are still doing our field trips to the Rincon Fuging Alley. Um, we're hoping that next year, during the school year, we've already started conversations about going to Ottawa Library in Prairie Paws again. And all of our staff development, our, um, conferences, state and, um, national are all virtual, and we have our first STEM conference next week, and then the last week of April, we will, um, do our first Zoom national conference. So, just want to let you know that I'm very happy and proud of my staff. I, um, for a long time, um, we have had a really great group, and, um, we don't fit into the normal after-school forty percent, um, turnover ratio. So, um, with that, with having great staff that keep coming back every year, our program is more cohesive and strong. And lastly, we just want to thank you guys for your support, and if you ever want to visit, just let us know. We'd love to have you. Um, we know that having our program at Eugene Field, we're very fortunate for the space and the amenities, and it just better helps us serve the kids. So, if there's any questions, for your viewing pleasure, during question time, I put a few pictures up there from our program.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks.
Thank you so much for coming and letting us know what's going on. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having.
All right. So, our next item for discussion, we have Mrs. Bybee, our Curriculum Director, who is here to talk about the recommendations for next year, and I think she has some other folks who are going to share some things as well.
I do. So, actually, you're going to hear less from me and more from them, but we're bringing, uh, four different curriculum, um, recommendations to you tonight. And, um, we're going to start with handwriting. So, Charlotte Testorf is, first of all, I want to thank Charlotte for coming. She not only was here after-school as we were doing some kindergarten work, but she is on handwriting cadre, math cadre, and social studies cadre. So, that, she is meeting a lot, and, because we do have a lot of meetings for these cadres to be able to work through all the curriculum, the work that has to be done. So, I appreciate Charlotte coming to talk with you tonight about handwriting.
Um, I had the pleasure of serving, um, let's see, for about eighteen months on a state committee, uh, developing our new handwriting standards. They rolled out in the summer of 2020, uh, did not quite roll out as envisioned because of everything that had happened. But myself and one of our new OTs, Holly Breckisen, I think that's how we say her name. Um, she's new at Sunflower this year and new to our district. She and I both served for about eighteen months on this committee at the state level. I have never seen any kind of standard work done at the state level before, so my eyes were opened. I'm very grateful we did something small, like handwriting, and nothing big like ELA or math. Holy cow. Um, so, the new state standards rolled out last summer, uh, and then in December, our cadre started meeting, and we went over a variety of things, uh, learned about dysgraphia, uh, which is basically a neurological disorder of how kids can get what's up here onto paper. It is different than dyslexia. Um, and we will continue as a district at the elementary level to do some PD on that as well. But it does go hand-in-hand with the dyslexia training that we've been going through. Um, then in January of this year, we, as a district, came up with our handwriting instructional practices, and we sent a survey out to teachers. And then we also listened to presentations from a couple of different companies. Zainab Blaser is who we've been using for handwriting, and then we also listened to Handwriting Without Tears. After listening to both of those presentations, then we used Rubrics to evaluate those programs, and then again surveyed the teachers as to what they felt like they would use the most. Um, and then in February, we compared the two programs and, uh, using the Rubrics and went through the surveys from the teachers. So, here are the handwriting instructional practices that we came up with. Um, I won't read through it all, um, you are welcome to read through it as you choose to, but basically, handwriting, um, has taken a backseat in the past, and research shows that, and we discovered this at the state level, that, uh, there is great value still in handwriting. And the way that kids, as they are learning their letters and their alphabet, and even in upper grades, that there is still something to be said about actually getting it out, writing it. It helps make things stick a little bit better. Um, handwriting is only meant to be fifteen to twenty minutes in a day. And I know most teachers are like, how am I going to squeeze one more thing into the day? But there are ways that we can do that. And, um, we also looked at what PD would be, uh, needed. And Holly and I are both, um, trained to train the teachers. So, we can go actually across the state to other districts and train the teachers on the new standards that have rolled out. Um, so we are able to offer that to our district at some point as well.
I just wanted to add a little bit. There's, the standards actually go through sixth grade. Uh, in, uh, fourth, or, I'm sorry, fifth and sixth grade, though, it's what it typically has been where it's our students are developing their own hybrid handwriting. So, they're really, by sixth grade, there's not formal instruction that needs to happen. It's just that they continue to encourage kids to, um, show the legibility and use the form and production of their letters. But up until that, um, time that, and I can tell you from all my years in education, handwriting has changed in the focus. Um, it used to be the thing that would get pushed out first, and I'm sure you've all heard about, oh, gosh, kids don't know how to even sign their name and so forth because they don't, they can't read cursive. But really, what, with the science of reading, our teachers saw too in that training is that, um, there is, it's called orthographic mapping, where when kids learn the letters and the letter sounds, that when they actually are producing it on paper, it helps to solidify it in their mind. So, uh, so we will need to make a mindset shift on, on what handwriting, the purpose of handwriting to, as a district.
And when it comes to the standards, it is, sorry, it is written pre-K through sixth grade. Uh, pre-K really does focus mostly on your pre-writing, shapes, slants, curves, that type of thing. And then there's a parallel that happens. Kindergarten and third grade become, kindergarten is, uh, forming from a model, so forming manuscript letters from a model. Third grade is forming cursive letters from a model. Then first grade and fourth grade is parallel, because first grade is forming and producing from a model manuscript. Fourth grade is forming and producing cursive. And then third and fifth grade, uh, is producing from memory at that point without a model. So, here are the Rubric results, uh, when we looked at Zainab Blaser and then Handwriting Without Tears. And it became pretty clear across the board that Handwriting Without Tears was what really stood out as the best program that we could adopt to support this. And why did we pick this? It aligns with the new handwriting standards. Um, one of the teachers on the cadre is left-handed, and our current program is not very left-handed friendly. In my class of seventeen, I have seven left-handed students. That's the most I've ever had in one year. So, that is a lot. I've never, um, so, I've noticed, I've actually been using Handwriting Without Tears this year, and I've never seen students write left, I mean, just the way it's designed is very left-handed friendly. Uh, it is teacher-friendly as well. It doesn't seem overwhelming. There's great technology embedded into it, um, little catchy videos to go along, that are thirty seconds long. So, it's very, um, short, but easy for the kids to, uh, use and become engaged with. It's also very easy to scaffold and differentiate. Um, I've also noticed, since I've been using it this year, some, how the kids are applying it to other areas throughout the whole day, which is what you want. You want them to use it throughout their entire day. So, there is a mindset change that, uh, needs to come. Handwriting needs to be explicitly taught, not just, oh, I'll get to it when I get to it, or, oh, I have a sub today. We'll have the sub do this today. And so, it, it is best when it is explicitly taught. Um, and it's not meant to be used as a filler either. I mean, it's, it's really important to use the way it's designed to. Um, one thing that we've noticed with what we currently use is that a lot of teachers don't even realize there's a teacher's manual available. And there was, um, an update, the current one, that we did consider that we're using, uh, but we really felt like Handwriting Without Tears was above and beyond, uh, what we're currently using. I think this is your, your best.
So, our recommended materials, we had the teachers go through and look to see what, what there was to offer and what they felt like they really, um, would be most appropriate for them. So, really, in pre-K and then kindergarten, the manipulatives are actually, again, part of that mapping in their brain, that they're not just trying to form the letters, but they're actually using wood pieces. And there's a puppet, and there's a matman that will help them to be able to, um, know how to be able to form those letters and produce those letters. So, you can see what I've, what the recommended materials are. We did also add some support resources for, um, for our sped teachers so that they can have the same, um, they'll, they'll be supporting the same, um, instruction that's happening in the classroom when they're working with, with kids. So, there were a few support resources there. So, the quote for this year, you can see, is twenty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. That's for materials. And then professional development, which we would definitely want to do, and, um, handwriting without tears, professional development is really high-quality. Anybody I have, I'm, I've used this in the past. Any teachers that I know that have, um, been part of their professional development always come back very much understanding the foundation of handwriting and why it's important to teach that. So, it's a, a very quality, um, done professional development. So, and then moving forward, I thought it would just be good for you to know too what the approximate yearly cost, uh, would be if we were to continue with all of the student handwriting books. Now, this year, the, the books would have handwriting books and a writing book, um, and then we can determine whether we need to continue with that. That would be just, I believe, through third grade, the, uh, or second grade. Third, fourth, and fifth would just have the handwriting books. Uh, and then this year, they're just giving free keyboarding licenses for all K-five students for one year, um, with a purchase. So, any questions about handwriting without tears, or?
I just have a picky question.
Yes.
What kind of handwriting, ball and stick, denoubling, what, what's it going to look like in prim, in elementary?
It's not denoubling. Um, so it is just purely, uh, basic, I mean, like, a lot of our letters start with a magic C. So, if you think about a lowercase a, or, so it's that magic C, helicopter, up, down, bump. I mean, it's very simple. And the other thing, sorry, maybe I shouldn't. The other difference is, recommendation from the state is to really get away from using dotted lines to trace. Because a lot of times, what happens is we push that out as independent work, when we really can't tell how the kids are forming their letters. We really can't, I mean, I was guilty of that before in the past. I would go, okay, today's letter is the letter F. Here's how you make an uppercase F. Here's how you make a lowercase f. Now, here you go. But how do I monitor twenty-two kids all at the same time? Are they all starting at the top and pulling down? Or first-grade teachers would then notice, oh, how many kids were starting at the bottom and going up, which is not good, necessarily good practice either. Um, so it is a lot of stick and ball. But handwriting without tears uses two lines, about your baseline and your midline. So, your letters, most of your short letters fall in that, uh, midline to baseline, but then there are tall letters that go above that as well.
No, I, I, I think this is, is really, I, I love handwriting. I'm a handwriting Nazi. But anyway, uh, I think it's really interesting, because sometimes when I teach the one-room school up at the depot, we do cursive, and they haven't really gotten into cursive yet. And they, they, instead of saying, I'm going to write the letter F, I'm going to draw the letter F, they don't, they see it as drawing this letter, not forming it.
Right.
And the other thing that was a selling point to us with handwriting without tears was what we call the verbal path, as to how to form those letters, was very consistent from manuscript to cursive. So, as they progress from kindergarten through second grade up into cursive then, then that same verbiage that's used to make those cursive letters are also used, that they've already used before. So, it's not a whole new, in most cases.
Thank you very much. Did you have a question?
I did have a question. I had, um, two quick questions. First of all, the, the curriculum we are currently using, how long have we been using that?
I honestly don't know. As long as I've been here. I mean, even when I was here before, we were using that.
Okay. And then the one that you are recommending, is that already in print? Like, if we order, it's already up and going?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much. Harold, did you have a question?
Okay, so, call me old-fashioned, okay? Uh, I'm above fifty. Uh, they introduce these things that have keyboards on them, you know? Um, so, handwriting has kind of come in and out, cursive's come in and out. So, I guess cursive's back in, uh, to.
Yes, there, there is a new renewed focus.
Renewed focus. You see, that's politically correct way of saying it, renewed. Renewed focus. You see, that's politically correct way of saying it, renewed focus, okay? Um, and I guess in asking about elementary, are we already spending time every day in um handwriting? Or are we asking teachers to carve out another fifteen minutes to focus on handwriting uh that they are, or they are not using? I don't know. I guess what I'm just saying.
I'd say all of them are doing it in some fashion. It probably is not every day or consistent. There, it's, it's going to vary across grades and across from teacher to teacher. So what we're trying to do is bring this back more to a systematic way of teaching handwriting. But like Charlotte said, in a very short amount of time. This should not be something that takes a lot of time out of their instructional day.
Okay.
Don't come look at my handwriting.
Well, you developed your own style.
Yeah.
Hybrid.
The hybrid, yeah. Okay, thanks, Charlotte.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, that was you. Okay. All right, so our next curriculum is ELL, and we have Anessa Nation and Alisa Christian uh that are ELL teachers. So they will talk a little bit just about the review process. They've done quite a bit of work with uh Mr. Robinson on really getting our ELL program to be where we are right now. And then about, they'll give you a little information about the curricular resources.
Okay, so um, a couple of months back, we did a whole review process of the whole ELL program and how we kind of see it going into the future. Um, we looked at um language proficiency level and how much services are needed in the classroom, how much services are needed out of the classroom, and how do we provide those services when they're out of the classroom? Um, we do have current curriculum. Um, we have Carousel, um, which is elementary. Um, there are some really good elements to Carousel. I love the vocab cards. It has really been helpful with some of my non-English speaking students. Um, Teacher Monster to Read, I've utilized that with the younger grades. Um, and Duolingo I've used with some of the older fourth and fifth grades. Um, some of the stuff with that is with Duolingo, you have to be able to read in Spanish. And some of our kids can't. They just speak Spanish. Um, and Carousel is pretty great with the vocab um cards, but a lot of the activities are just outdated and kind of boring for them. The pictures are really old and it's just black and white and not really something that interests the kids. Um, so we looked at that curriculum and what we have and what we kind of need because we have recognized that kids do need pull-out. With elementary, push-in for me is a huge um focus because I know that kids need to be in the classroom and I want them to um have that immersion for their language learning at that young of an age. Um, their minds are so, I mean, their minds are so able to be formed with that language that I want them to be with their classmates and, and learn it there. Um, but that does not mean that if a child starts at age, let's say eight, with no English in the school district, that he should always be in the classroom and not get some assistance out of the classroom. So we really did need a new curriculum that would help them acquire the language with a language focus for sure. Um, and so that's why we decided to look into some new things. Okay, okay. Start on the curriculum. Okay, we can go to the next one.
Well, I just want to um point out that the documentation that they have created and that what Mr. Robinson has also been part of that in creating, really helps to make sure that our ELL program is very systematic, that it's consistent in, in what the expectations are, that there's clear definitions. It's clearly defined uh which students might need support and what they will receive with that support. So I really commend the work that they've put into making sure that we have a documented ELL curriculum.
Yes, for example, so if you are a elementary student who was intermediate language proficiency level, um, most of the services would be in the classroom. But you would set aside time of the day to make sure that maybe three times a week, twenty minutes, three times a week to go over specific language skills if they're having trouble with verb, um, verb tenses. That's something that you would focus on. Um, so we recognize that in the older grades, having push-in would be extremely embarrassing if you were in high school and had a push-in ELL teacher. And we recognize most of um high school and middle school even would be pull-out services um where they can get assistance with their assignments and with their language learning. And then even for like kindergarten, even if there's a kindergartner who has no English speaking, because it's kindergarten, there's a huge amount of language. So we want to keep them actually in the classroom for the majority of the day, maybe pull them out a little bit. So that's our kind of the guidelines that we created so that we can know if there's this age and they're this proficiency level, we're seeing these skills, this is how many minutes they should be in the classroom. This is how many minutes we should provide services out of the classroom. Um, and we did that throughout the entire grade level with the various proficiency levels. Um, and then we have a transition form because they go from elementary to middle school if they don't pass the KELPA and they, we transition teachers. We have a transition form that we've created so that we can make sure that we are um just recognizing the needs that they have for that. So the new stuff that we have for elementary, the first one is Hands-on English. Um, it is actually the same group from Carousel. It's just really much more fun. It's for the younger kids. We really need to something K through two. Um, and it uses a lot of the same outline that Carousel uses, which I liked. I liked what they were learning and when they were learning it. I just really didn't like the activities that Carousel provided or the, a lot of the materials they provided. So Hands-on English, it, all of it can be online. Um, you can go on there. There are some obviously tactile things that you use for the kids, but they're just exciting characters. Um, it's great ways to have the, the reading and the writing and the speaking and the listening skills intensified when you're just working one-on-one with a kid. Um, so I really liked the Hands-on English. I tried that with several students of my younger grades so I could see if they liked it. Um, and they really liked it just because it's flashy and fun and, and they wanted to talk back to this elephant that's talking to you, you know? So it was fun. Um, and the second thing we both really love is Brain Pop ELL. So this is on the elementary side. It's for the older, older grades. You have to be able to read or have a specific amount of reading in order to participate in that. I'm using it as young as second grade and unanimously they all love it. Um, you go into this website and you have this robot, his name is Moby, and his friend, and Moby has his own language and his friend has learning new languages. And the video, while the kids might not know it, focuses on a specific skill, like present progressive tense. They don't know that's what's happening, but that's what they're watching. Then they have a reading activity that goes with it, a speaking activity, a writing activity, and a grammar activity that goes with it. Um, the fun thing about that is they submit their work. The teacher sees everything, can mark maybe explicit directions on what they've done wrong or implicit directions on, hey, do you see the mistake in this sentence, you know? And they can go back online again and fix it through that and submit it again. So we can see their growth. And they just really liked it. So I actually asked for an extension in the trial so that I can continue with the students because I'm really hoping you'll have a go for it, so.
Okay, uh, my kids that I had been using Brain Pop with as well, um, loved it. I'd go to pick them up and the first thing they said was, do I get to do Brain Pop today? So they, it does really engage them. Uh, at the secondary level, um, we were, looked at a number of things, but really liked the Digital Champion Teacher Kit with the Student Edition. And um, our program has really changed um at the secondary level, middle school and high school. We've gotten um for the first time, students who actually come in speaking no English at all. This is a research-based uh language development program for middle school and high school uh students. And it's, it is at all levels of language proficiency. Um, it has some great interactive tools. It also allows a student to uh self-check their work and allows a teacher to monitor their progress. This program really strongly emphasizes uh vocabulary development, which um at the middle school and high school is a major obstacle for our ELL students that come in as a newcomer or a beginner. So um, we also liked it because it was digital. But um, feel like if you look at what we have in our curriculum right now for the secondary students, um, it needs to be enhanced and updated somewhat.
Thank you. Um, so you can see the costs here for um ELL. The, the three that come from the same company is two thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. And then Brain Pop is nine hundred and fifty-four dollars for one year. Um, you can see up in the Hands-on English Class Kit and the Digital Champion, um, what the future years would be. So there is a renewal cost for um, for, for those pieces, for the teachers. And then for, depending upon how many students, we're purchasing licenses and we would look at that possibly with about the same amount of students for next year. So a renewal cost, or future yearly cost is also noted there. That's just more for your knowledge. Any questions about ELL?
It's been a long time since we've renewed the curriculum, hasn't it?
Yeah.
I can't remember.
Yeah, I think we've done a little supplements here and there, but as far as actual whole curriculum review, yes, it's been a long time.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming to present to us, ladies.
Thank you. Dean, is that you? There we go. That was you. Okay. All right, so our next one is the Visual Arts, and this was K-12. And Mrs. Whitaker is going to speak with you on this part. She actually, her and I led these meetings and there were a couple that I couldn't be at, and so she took over. So I'm gonna let her give you the information about art.
Yes, and all, all the art teachers apologize that they couldn't be here with you all tonight. A lot of them are teaching community courses and doing different things. Um, that's why they weren't available to be here. Um, so Mrs. Bybee and I worked with our visual art teachers, our um elementary art teacher, the middle school art teacher, and then the two high school uh visual art teachers. And so what we did is we reviewed our standards. We looked at our curriculum apps to make sure that they were updated with any new standards and that they really looked at the resources that they are currently utilizing to teach art classes across kindergarten through twelfth grade. One of the biggest things that came up in that conversation is there's not really a whole lot of great resources out there for art teachers. Um, Melissa Mitchell's been in our district for quite a long time. She's retiring this year. And she's just never really asked for much, um, because there's never really been a lot out there. And so what I'll talk about in a minute is a really great art resource that is kind of new, up and coming. Some area, school districts around us like De Soto, Alatha, and Shawnee Mission are starting to utilize it. Um, and we'll kind of talk about that in a minute. So we had that conversation, um, and that led us to go to Mrs. Bybee to ask for um a pilot of this pro-learning and this flex curriculum, um, which is a resource that could be utilized kindergarten through twelfth grade. And so Mrs. Bybee was able to get the teachers a pilot of that. They utilize that in their classrooms. I know Mrs. Callahan came to our next meeting. It was about three weeks later and she was able to give all these amazing things that she was able to do um within her elementary art classes with this new curriculum. Mrs. Mitchell and both Mrs. Markalato shared how um, they really like the videos are very concise and they're updated and they use contemporary artists. So right now they go to YouTube and they find some video and then they have to watch this twenty, twenty-five minute video and figure out which pieces I want to show the kids. This art curriculum had really great, quick videos um that they were able to utilize to start lessons, to help students that were struggling. Um, and they both were able to articulate how they were, um, utilize that pilot um in their classroom. And so they do feel like the pro-learning and the flex curriculum is just a really strong resource, especially since they've never really had anything um to utilize before. It is, um, there's a beginner, intermediate, and advanced level lessons. Um, it's very engaging for the students. And I know, Amy, if you go to the next um one, it's tied not only to our Kansas State standards, but also the national standards. The company pilots in, or they update um the lessons. They try to, is it five a month? Is that what they said they try to do? Three to five new lessons are put on there a month. If the teachers um email them and say, hey, I would really like to see a lesson or a video about this art topic, then they pride themselves in digging through that. The other piece besides the curriculum, there's a pro-learning. The pro-learning is really professional development videos for teachers that they could utilize. We don't really have a lot of great places for our art teachers to go to really dig into their content. And so this would allow them to have access to a library of professional learning opportunities that they could do on Fridays during PLC. Mrs. Mitchell and Mrs. Markalatos also talked about how these pro-learning videos would be really great for our advanced art students at the high school. Um, that when they start um needing to differentiate and students are working at a faster pace, they can utilize some of that to deepen the knowledge level of um the students after they viewed some of them. Um, so they're really excited to have a curriculum, potentially having a curriculum resource because like I said, they haven't had one in many years. The art, art teachers who came from other districts were just excited to have the opportunity to sit down and engage in a conversation about their standards and resources that are out there. And so I'll let Miss Bybee talk about the financial piece of it.
So the great thing about this, this is a um seven-year adoption. So this one, we were able to get a quote for that. So nineteen thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars was, is a one-time um cost, and that will take us through seven years. And then they gave us a discount, so our one-time total would be seventeen thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty cents. And when you split that over seven years, it's a very reasonable for all of our art teachers. Uh, so um, the, he did give me a quote that will separate the cost of the, how much the professional development cost is and then how much the materials are. He just had, actually just got it to me today, so I haven't taken a look at that. But we'll be able to separate because our professional development materials can come out of different lines. But the total cost will be seventeen thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty cents. Any questions about art? Okay, thanks, Mrs. Whitaker. Okay, and our last one is Gifted. And Mrs. Fanning and uh Mrs. Watkins, our gifted teacher, took the lead role on going through this um review. So I'm gonna let them speak towards uh what the process that they went through.
Good evening. Um, so my role in the last five years has been the gifted teacher for USD two ninety. So I go from our itty-bitty's in kindergarten and first grade, clear up to our high school seniors. Um, last year we were able to implement the COGAT, which is the cognitive abilities test as a screener for the gifted process. And that's helping us get in and make our program more equitable so that we're looking at um with our low SES population and with all of our students from different backgrounds, this helps give us a level or, a more level playing field to make sure we're not relying solely on teacher recommendation, which has unknown biases. It's not that they're intentionally biased, it's just they don't realize that that's where it's at. Um, another piece that we looked at was the social emotional curriculum. While the elementary schools have Boys Town and that works really well for our K-five kids, for my middle school and high school kids, gifted especially, because they're asynchronous, you have your kids who are super brilliant at math, but if they don't get their way, they have no idea what to do and how to handle it. Or they're brilliant at reading, but if I tell them to go in the library and pick a book, they can do whatever they want, they break down. Um, and it's all over across everywhere. It's asynchronous, so we've got highs and lows and everywhere. So the social emotional curriculum is one that has lessons, but you don't just teach it. I don't go, hey, Chris, today we're gonna learn how to have self-control. It's tying it into the projects and activities that we're doing. So most times they don't even realize that that's what they're learning. Um, and then something else we looked into were the robotics piece. Uh, the We Do Lego sets come with curriculum to go with it that is state-aligned. Um, B-bots and Ozobots and Spherobots are all ones that, the B-bots and Ozobots do not need a computer of any kind to program them. Uh, the Ozobots actually use markers and it goes off of the color it sees and the pattern it sees. Uh, the Spherobot does use Chromebooks and then green screens. We talk about immersing into your language and into what you're learning. And when you see yourself in it, it sticks more. And then Legos. So my students, whether they're in first grade, second grade, or clear up to my high school seniors, love a good Lego challenge. And I have been very blessed to get lots of sets donated. That means I have a whole lot of Star Wars and a whole lot of really hodgepodge pieces. So when we get a, create a Lego challenge that says, okay, you can use sixteen pieces and you want it all one color. I get my kids who look at me and they go, Mrs. Watkins, all we have are stormtroopers. Yeah, well, I'm sorry. This is what we've got. This is what we're working with. But the great thing about Lego challenges is it's that STEM piece and that engineering piece, and it's timeless. How many of you have sat down with Legos and you just play with them? And you build, and then that helps relax them. So then we talk about that social emotional piece as well. And then Genius Hour Professional Development is one where you take twenty minutes a day or one hour a week, and the kids get to work on a project that they're passionate about. It can be anything that they want, but by getting this professional development, I can take that to teach to the teachers so that they can enrich students within their classroom. Because I'm one person and we have a lot of buildings and a lot of kids in our district. So my job is to help empower the classroom teacher as well. Um, and my whole PLC of me, um, having some time to do Genius Hour Professional Development during that PLC time as well as some of the other professional development would be very beneficial to our district as a whole.
I'll just say, Mrs. Watkins did a lot of prep work on the front end in terms of resources. She has spent some time really looking at what resources she already has, what course offerings we offer through Ottawa High School, how she's utilizing those materials. So she's done a lot of work on the front end, so kudos to her for that. And she's also continuing to develop that curriculum map and make sure that we really have that systematic approach and making sure that we have all of those sort of skills, problem-solving skills, things like that covered. So kudos to her for doing that work on the front end as well. And then one other thing we didn't mention on the bottom of that slide, the Buck Institute offers a project-based learning institute, but right now it's virtual. And that's one of those things that she said, I'd rather just wait till we're in person. So right now, we're not doing that, but we will be looking for that in the future when something in-person comes out.
So the total cost of that is two thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-five cents plus shipping, whatever that would be. And then the professional development would be the hundred and seventy-nine dollars for a total cost of two thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. And that does not include the Buck Institute. That cost would be above what, what we're doing there. So, any questions?
Just one quick question.
Yeah.
About how many students in our district are involved in this?
Want me to answer? Do you want to answer?
Again, I don't mind.
So currently, I have 22 students that are identified in K through 12. And we are currently in the SIP team process for 25 more.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I just, I think it's great that we're addressing both spectrums. Having conversations or emails with pretty much everybody sitting back here of making sure we catch the kids and all the gaps, the kids that are in these gaps and the kids and everything in between. And I think this is a great step in the right direction.
And I just want to thank all of these teachers for, first of all, being here tonight because I think it makes such a difference for you to be able to hear from them and hear what their expertise is in their area. And there's been, they've done so much work in getting us to this point, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, moving on, we do need an executive session for negotiations tonight. If somebody would like to read the recommended action statement, we need about 15 minutes and we need to invite Dr. Cobb's with us as well.
Madam President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss teacher negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under coma and that the open meeting shall resume at eight.
Eight twenty-five?
Eight twenty-five?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Susan? Thank you. And that passes six oh. We'll be back at eight twenty-five.
You might grab Susan, but don't forget her. You might have grabbed Susan, but don't forget her.